Good morning. It's Tuesday, December 3rd, 9:30 a.m. If you'd all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust.
Amen.
All right, we got minutes.
Move to approve the minutes of the November 26th meeting?
Second.
Moved to second. I wasn't here, but I watched it on video, so I'm gonna go ahead and vote on it.
It was very efficient.
Yes, it was.
Yes, it was.
Roll call, please. Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley? Yes, all right. Any public comment regarding any of our pending resolutions? Seeing them, we'll go ahead and proceed. We have a commendation presentation commending DeeDee Keith for her 38 years of service with Medina County Job and Family Services. Where has it has come to the attention of the Board of Medina County Commissioners that DeeDee Keith is retiring from Medina County Job and Family Services on December 13th, 2024. And whereas DeeDee began employment with Job and Family Services on September 28th, 1986, she began as a telephone operator, holding that position for two years before moving to the case aid position for the Public Assistance Division. She held that role until 1991, when she moved to the role of Income Maintenance Worker II, Processing Public Assistant Benefits. In 1992, she advanced to an Income Maintenance Worker III, Processing a Higher Level of Assistance Benefits. She has remained in that role to this day. And whereas over the course of her employment, DeeDee has processed all but one of the numerous public assistance programs the agency manages. And whereas DeeDee attended college courses, offerings at Stark State College, held her notary for the agency for several years, as well as mentored numerous staff sharing her knowledge of public assistance programs, the history of the agency, not to mention her sense of humor and infectious laugh. And now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Medina County, Ohio, that DeeDee Keith be and is hereby commended for her over 38 years of service with Medina County Job and Family Services. Be it further resolved that the Board wishes to take this opportunity to offer best wishes to DeeDee on her retirement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved to second. Any comments?
Congratulations, really.
Yes.
Thank you for your service.
Roll call. Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley? Yes. Want to come forward? Infectious laugh, huh?
DeeDee laughs, you can't put that way.
There you go. Please, go ahead and say a few words. You're more than welcome to.
I just want to thank everybody for this accommodation, and I'm just privileged to stand here today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just say one quick thing?
Sure.
Of course, underscoring everything that you guys mentioned in your proclamation, and I, as I was going through DeeDee's personnel file, just trying to find timelines and things like that for what to say, I have to share this. This, Holly will appreciate this. This is the personnel action from when she was originally hired in 1986.
Oh my gosh, wow.
Wow.
I almost feel like I should wear white museum gloves with it. Ralph Barry was the commissioner at the time, and DeeDee's starting wage was $5.91 when she first started, so...
Unbelievable.
So just like looking at that document and understanding, like it was on a typewriter, and now we're sending stuff into the cloud. All that DeeDee has experienced in her 38 years here is pretty impressive.
She ought to write a history of the agency. You really ought to.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. We do have some resolutions of business here. Dan Becker, Highway Engineers Office.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Got one resolution for your consideration, determining that equipment used by Medina County engineers in excess and approval for disposal. It's a Bow Mag plate compactor. Isn't that exciting?
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley? Yes.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Sanitary Engineer, Jeremy Sinco.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Three resolutions for consideration today. The first is amending the purchase price of a single axle cabin chassis and dump truck body through state purchasing. The second is authorizing the sanitary engineer to obtain easements for Bactel and Branch Road Water Main Improvement Project. The third is authorizing the sanitary engineer to enter into an agreement with Jones and Henry Engineers for professional design services for the Plum Creek Pump Station Project.
Move to approve the three resolutions.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley? Yes. Very good. Thank you. And now we have our Transit Director, Shannon Ryan. Good morning.
Good morning. Just have one resolution. Approval of the 2025 Civil Rights Plan for Medina County Public Transit.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley? Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shannon. Holly Muir, our Human Resources Director. Good morning, Holly.
Good morning. On our Personnel Changes Resolution today, we have four new hires, one at County Home, two at Job and Family Services, and one in IT, three rate increases, two in sanitary, and one in building, and two leave of absence, one in sanitary and one in maintenance.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley? Yes.
Thank you.
Now, our Finance Director, Brett Thomas.
Basically, turn the rest of the meeting over to Brett at this point.
Pretty much, yeah. And you're gonna do the resolutions for Matt as well?
Correct.
Go ahead.
Yep. So, we start off with seven resolutions from my department. The first one is amending appropriation measures. There's a couple highlight notes on here. The first one is an increase in our PTT, and that is for our Microsoft licenses for countywide. An additional note on here is a port authority increase. This was for a grant that it actually turns out that they will not have, we will not have received until 2025. So this will end up going unused. But we wanted to have it on there because it was, the grant's been accepted, but we don't have the...
Expense yet.
Right. Or the date of payout from the state.
Oh, okay.
So it looks like that'll drag a little bit. Our second resolution is transfers of appropriations. There's not too much on here. This is actually all related to housekeeping for the end of the year. Typically, we would do one transfer appropriation per month, and that is done on the third week of the month. But with our cutoff for purchase orders coming in, we wanted to make sure that we make these changes ahead of time to make sure, to give the departments plenty of time to have proper accounting for end-of-year expenses. So you won't see another one of these until our very last resolution on December 31st, where we do our housekeeping measures from my department.
Okay.
Our third resolution is expenditure adjustments for various funds. These are actually all very happy ones. For the most part, we're dealing with grant movement. The Board of Elections has obtained $30,620 in readiness grants for the general election that we are now eligible to apply our expenses back over to. As well, we have a specialized docket expense for the juvenile court, which absorbs $55,000 of their salary. So overall, $85,000 in grant money. Our fourth resolution is transfer of inventory between offices. We just have a conference table that's going from Veteran Services over to Maintenance. Our fifth resolution is excess property, a fairly short list this time. Our sixth resolution is expenses of county officials. We have a small Planning Directors Meeting in Columbus for the Planning Department. And our seventh and final resolution from my group is our weekly bills in the amount of $362,384.52.
Move to approve the seven resolutions.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley? Yes. All right, and go ahead.
All right, and now putting on Matt's hat. From the County Administrator's Office, we are authorizing the contract with the Medina County Health Department for occupational immunization services that we provide to our employees of various departments. This is an update. It is fairly standard repeat contract for us for immunization services. This contract will go from January of '25 through December of '27, so a three-year term. And the fees for that will be determined at the time of services provided. So, but it goes by the Board of Health's schedule.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion?
These are, and it's all voluntary programs. People, they choose to take advantage of it.
Yes. All right. Roll call, please. Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley? Yes. All right.
All right.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Brett. All right, now for Department Updates, Laura Toth.
Laura, even though the room is cleared out, I still want to hear what you have to say.
Thank you. Well, you said Brett has the rest of the meeting. I was like, all right.
We still have half the room.
Exactly. They're just all in the room. Good morning. I wanted to put the final update on the Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Program. It ended November 30th. We had a total of just around 365 participants in Medina County that signed up for the program. But the utilization of the online voucher system was under 50%. So I don't believe that the state's gonna change this. I just believe we, you know, as more people get used to it, our utilization will go back up. And that was not unheard of for the state.
So that's 50% of the people who received them or who qualified for them found a way to use them? Is that what that 50% means?
Correct. So everybody was, or they didn't use their full amount, so they were issued $50, but maybe people only used $20.
Gotcha.
Or people didn't utilize them at all.
That's why we had an issue with its distribution, correct?
Correct.
Is it lack of smartphones, or...?
I think it's really the biggest problem, sorry, State of Ohio, was the rollout. There were a lot of problems with the rollout. It took a lot of time to, you had a choice. You could either use a QR code, which was really like a foreign language for so many of our seniors, or you could get a physical card. And there were problems. The physical cards came out, and connecting them to the system wasn't issues. There were really a lot of technical issues. I just want to commend my staff because people would call in, and we would walk them through how to use that.
But as you point out, that was statewide issue.
It was. It was absolutely. It'll be interesting to see what statewide utilization, if I get that number, I'll absolutely report it.
And the other metric we don't have is how many people that don't have smartphones maybe never even attempted to get them that could have gotten a paper voucher.
Correct. And we have walked, I would say, probably 40 or 50 people. We walked through getting an email account. This is how you set it up. And this is how you can, you have to go back and check the email, so they'd come back in two weeks. It really was a process if you don't have that access in your, in your hands or at your home on a, on a computer.
So do we know in gross numbers what the amount of vouchers issued, not so much used, but issued relative to prior years was, or not?
I just know that last year we had 290, so we had more people. We had 292 people because last year we got the physical vouchers.
Yeah.
And this year we had like right around 365. So there are a lot, you know, 60 more people.
That's, yeah.
The utilization was a lot less.
Yeah.
So hopefully we can square that circle next year.
Yeah.
We absolutely know there are seniors out there that are food insecure in Medina County. The Medina County Senior and Adult Foundation wanted to help. So last year, we all began an Aldi food-only gift card. I made sure it was food-only because you can buy gifts, you can buy alcohol at Aldi. But these are people that we want to help purchase food for the holidays. So last year, we sent to all 292 seniors, we sent a $25 gift card that's paid for through the foundation. This year, with the help of not only the foundation, but the giving place in Medina, the foundation is sending out $50 food-only gift cards to 349 participants.
That's fantastic.
I purchased 17,500 Aldi gift cards. And they're very easy to work with, and it's a, it's a great place for especially people who are, don't have a lot of money. There's a lot of options there to buy. So we're very excited, and they'll go out this week. And it's one of the most popular things that, that we've done. So it's very nice, and I'm glad we had that additional help from the giving place to be able to up the amount. Christmas celebrations will be in full swing throughout Medina County for seniors this month. Every year, our agency takes collections for a different cause for people who want to contribute. This year, we're collecting items for Kitten Crazy. These items will be donated on December 12th. Kitten Crazy has provided programs for seniors in Brunswick and Medina. And our client, we have the seniors choose and then just take donations if you bring stuff in, or if you don't, they can't give us cash. We don't want their cash, but they can come to the turnover of like items. And if they want to give a cash donation directly to Kitten Crazy, they can at that time. So that's gonna take place on December 12th. On Friday, the 13th, we'll have our holiday celebration at the Medina Center. And also Suprema Senior Center of the City of Wadsworth will celebrate that day, and they'll pull their last 12 days of Christmas raffle ticket. On Tuesday, the 17th, the holiday celebration will be in Brunswick. And on Friday, the 20th, we will have at the Top Swing Band, which is retired members of the orchestra. They're pretty fantastic. And they will play holiday favorites at the Brunswick Recreation Center. We will end the month with our annual Noon Years' Eve Celebration, and that's on Friday, the 27th. So there's plenty of opportunities to celebrate if you are, you are all invited anytime you want to stop in. We received our final correspondence from the state regarding healthy aging funding. So I just got this letter this week from the CFO of the Ohio Department of Aging, saying we were awarded all, we spent it appropriately, and we should not hear from them again, unless they want to give us more money, that would be great. Or if they need any information for auditing. We are currently in the midst of our annual Subaru Save the Love Program with the National Meals on Wheels Organization. And we are just spreading the word about Meals on Wheels, hoping to get more people to recognize the program. I will be back here in two weeks with a resolution to change our agency name to Medina County Senior and Adult Services. So you get to see me again this month. And I will have our new logo. I'll have it displayed and everything at that time.
For the healthy aging program, could you go ahead and send us a list or at least a summary of how that money was spent?
Absolutely.
I want to make sure that we do put that in a newsletter. As you know, some of the legislative leaders, what it was going through, were hesitant to have that county commissioners be given that money. In fact, choice for, among some of the legislatures was give it to the area-wide agencies for spending. And the argument of the CCAO was no, counties actually commissioners know better how to use it. And I think it'd be beneficial for us to communicate back, here's what it helped. I mean, we had some of that was used with Habitat for Humanity for the program of adding that. And frankly...
Is that the one we use for the hearing tip?
Hearing loops, absolutely.
Yes. So those are the things we need to promote to the legislators. So if there is that opportunity next year with additional funding of the same thing, we need to demonstrate to them that this is, at least particularly our legislators, this is how it was spent, and this is how it benefited. And that I guess we can challenge that if they had given it to the larger Cuyahoga County-dominated organization, we would never seen any of those benefits.
Yeah. I will tend to agree with that statement. I don't want to say too much, yeah.
Let's make sure we publish, we publicize that to our legislators.
Absolutely. I'll get with Brian, and that's an easy report to pull, so.
Thank you.
No problem.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Very good. Thanks.
Denise Testa, Planning Services Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I know you've all met our new Associate Planner, Jeff Cassus, who comes with us with nine years of experience in GIS developing data analytics as well as CAD. So we're very excited for him to join the county, and he's already hit the ground running with some of our township zoning maps, actually. So for December, we are meeting with a developer regarding Cox Ridge, which is a 255 sublot subdivision in Monville Township on the corner of Wedgewood and Worcester Pike. So we're very excited to review that project and also work with some of the neighboring parcels or adjacent parcels, as well as they're looking at connecting to our sewer and, to our public sewer. We also, for January, we currently have one text amendment for the Planning Commission January Agenda. That agenda will also include nominations and elections of officers. I anticipate that we will receive a couple of subdivision applications, and we'll also discuss the cost of services report that Steve and I have been working on, including the scope of work, the members, and the budget at that meeting. We also met twice with our zoning inspectors networking community, also known as ZINC, this month. And I will distribute the notes and confirm our subsequent meetings in 2025. And those conversations, there were some clear themes that came out of both of those meetings. And I'm very excited to, to schedule those for 2025. The Fairgrounds Project, as Colleen has mentioned several times, is continuing to move forward, and I anticipate great things coming from, from that project, which Colleen will probably have an update here in discussion. For PY24 Community Development Block Grant, our CDBG application, I did speak with the state this morning, and we anticipate receiving our grant agreement this or next week. So it's a little later than usual, but we'll give them some grace. We also will continue offering our planning and zoning workshops for 2025. So those dates will, will be confirmed here soon and sent out to our villages, cities, and townships. The GIS user meetings also is kind of relaunched. So in the county, and Jeff will attend that. I believe the next meeting is in January. December 5th, we are attending the CCAO Directors Meeting this Thursday. Next Tuesday, December 10th, at 2:00 p.m. at Medina Library. Shannon Ryan, our Transit Director, and myself are presenting a fair housing and transit presentation. And that is free, and that'll be in the Medina County Library at 2:00 p.m. On December 12th is the Township Association Holiday Meeting. And then moving into January, which is just around the corner, I will be attending the Ohio Township Association Meeting. Or Winter Conference, rather. Exactly. So with that in mind, are there any, any questions? All right, thank you.
Welcome aboard, Jeff.
Thank you so much.
All right, and next we have OSU Extension. Good morning.
Hi, everybody. So I'm Sierra. I'm the 4-H educator here in Medina County with OSU Extension. Today, we're gonna highlight our relationships that we've had with our schools in Medina County. So we currently are working with every school in the county through some type of programming, whether that's financial literacy, workforce development. I've done programming from technology all the way to local government. We have covered quite some ground. But today, we asked Tiffany, one of our longtime 4-H members, volunteers. She bleeds green, for a lack of better term, to come and talk to you guys today. I'll let her introduce herself, but she is one of our great relationships we have with our schools, so.
Very good. Thanks. You're welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Tiffany Cosman, and I am an elementary curriculum specialist with Medina City Schools. So I've brought some pictures for you all to just highlight this relationship that we have. With community stakeholders, Medina City Schools has developed our Portrait of a Bee, and that was created to be our North Star. So we know that that is our commitment to the community, that we are going to provide students with excellent academic content and rigor, but also we're going to work to develop these Portrait of a Bee competencies. And in part, we do that with our relationships with our community. And as we do this, and we work to, really work together and engage the resources in the community, we feel that this partnership is very valuable for our students, our staff, and our parents. Ohio State University Extension supports our teachers as they work to bring application and deeper learning into the classrooms. So we know that learning doesn't just occur inside the four walls of the school, but it happens everywhere. And the relationship that we have with OSU Extension has really made that possible. They, the staff from OSU Extension works to develop lessons that teachers need based on the Ohio academic content standards, but also on the needs of the classroom. Each classroom and grade level have their own set of unique challenges and desires, and they really work to turn any 4-H program into a school-based program, as they work with our teachers. The Extension staff has also been integral in providing and bringing new programs to Medina City Schools. Sierra just spoke about the local government project. We were able to work with Sierra, and we were able to engage all of our third-grade students in a local government program that was virtual. So students were able to engage with Sierra, but also with each other throughout our five elementary buildings. And that was a really incredible experience that was new for us and for Sierra. At the same time, they were also working on planning a mini agricultural day for kindergarten students. So kindergarten students, as part of their English language arts curriculum, were learning about farms. And at the end of these units, Sierra and her team were able to work together to plan play-based activities for students to really highlight all the knowledge that they had gained during this unit in a play-based way. We hear reports from our teachers all the time. The lessons OSU Extension does with our students provide students opportunities to have feedback from experts and also practice their vocabulary and content knowledge in a meaningful way. As the Extension staff is in our classrooms, our students also have gained the experience of learning about careers they might not have known existed prior to this partnership. And we think that's pretty valuable. We want our students to grow up and do amazing things in the world, but we also want them to see Medina as home. And maybe some of them will choose to be in these roles here. And as Sierra and Erin and Brittany and Ashley are doing this work, we're also providing opportunities for our families to gain a deeper understanding of the resources available in Medina County. This team is incredibly impactful as they plan lessons and plan opportunities for students, but also for families. Our preschool students, we had the opportunity, this was one of my favorites. Sierra and Erin came, and they did yoga and zumba for preschoolers and their families. So it's a lot more difficult than it looks, just so you know. The kids had a great time, and they also were able to provide parents education about OSU Extension, about 4-H, and also why that movement is so important for our youngest students. Master Gardeners Jan Simmons and Claudia Damsby have been an active part of this journey with Medina City Schools for several years now. As teachers are working in the classrooms, Jan and Claudia are able to come in, and they support whatever academic content's going on as they act out with students from preschool through fifth grade, all these science concepts that they're learning. So our intent, as we partnered with OSU, was to bring some lessons into the classroom that supported our academic content and allowed students to work on these Portrait of a Bee competencies. That was our goal. Sounds pretty simple. But our impact has been the opportunities that students have to engage with community experts and receive feedback from those experts around the content knowledge that they're learning. We now have knowledge for our students of career opportunities that they maybe had not thought of before. of career opportunities that they maybe had not thought of before. Our students have an understanding of what OSU Extension is and what it offers. Our adult staff and the families of our students have that same knowledge. Our reach this year alone, first half of the school year, five elementary buildings, one preschool, that's where this program is taking, programming is taking place, nearly 900 students have been impacted by the work of the OSU Extension team. Over 30 teachers have been engaged with Ohio State University Extension and in meetings or in planning. And that's just in Medina City Schools alone. And we know that we are one small part. I know sometimes it doesn't feel like I know that, but we are one small part of a larger picture. And we know that. The impact and the reach of our partnership with OSU Extension has far exceeded the goals of our intent. And we are very proud of that partnership with OSU Extension. And we're very thankful and appreciative for that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks for sharing. Thank you.
And I would like to thank Tiffany. Work that we've been doing with her and her team has really piloted some programs that we've been able to share with other schools in the district. So for example, the preschool programming we did has spread. And all, a couple other preschools in the county have reached out to do similar programming. So they have really partnered with us in some pioneering of different techniques we do with the kids and programming we do. So I really appreciate Tiffany and her team. And do you guys have any other questions for us?
I do. Now that you've had several seasons in your new facility and a yard and everything, how's it going?
It's been going really great. The 4-H kids and parents love it, obviously, because we got room to do our programming. We've been able to partner with some outside organizations and potentially letting them use our facilities. The Master Gardeners have a native plant garden, I believe is called, in the backyard started. So we have really grown into our facility and been able to utilize it pretty well. So we appreciate you guys working with us on that. And we love our new home.
Excellent. Super. All right. Very good.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner's Resolution. We have a resolution termination of an agreement with the Medina County Law Library Association.
Yeah, this is, well, actually, I'll move to approve.
You want to make a motion first and then?
Yeah, move, move to approve. Yep, yep.
I will second.
Moving second now.
Okay. That's exciting.
Discussion.
No, so this, it probably is not as, as significant as it sounds, but this is related to a memorandum of understanding dated January 3rd, 2006 between the Board of Commissioners and the Law Library Association. And back in 2008, when there were some legislative changes, the association, the Law Library Association was essentially replaced by the Law Library Resources Board, and there was a shifting of assets. And from that point forward, we continued to really not take any action with respect to the memorandum of understanding related to the location of the Law Library in the county courthouse. So it's been as if we've had, potentially had two tenants there for one space. And so there was a renewal period that's coming up, that we have a one-year window to terminate. Otherwise, it would renew for another 10-year period on January 3rd, 2026. Our interpretation with the County Prosecutor's Office's assistance has been that, that MOU actually has been with the Law Library Resources Board all along. But that hasn't, that view hasn't been shared by the Law Library Association. So the most efficient way to, I think, solve some of that confusion is to exercise this, this right to terminate the lease, which we have to do before the end of the year, to prevent a, another 10-year renewal commencing January 3, 2026. So this is not going to change the location of the Law Library and the courthouse. The courthouse Law Library is going to be relocated temporarily just due to the municipal court construction that's going to, to be starting here in the early part of next year. But once that's completed, all the plans have been and continue to be that the Law Library will be returned to the basement of the 69 courthouse. So like I said, doesn't, doesn't change a lot of things, but we just are trying to kind of clean up some of the confusion that has come from having at least two different entities that, that at least have a claim to say that's, that's their space. So, but I, I don't think there's going to be any functional change to the way the Law Library operates as a result of this. So.
To be clear, this gives them basically a 30-day notice that we're terminating it as of January 3rd.
Well, it's actually-
Yeah.
A 390 days.
390 days. Sorry. So, right.
Okay.
Yep, yep. We're terminating, which was under the memorandum we're entitled to.
We, we are in the last, yeah, the, we are in the last 30 days of the window we have to terminate prior to-
Got it.
-one year in advance of the renewal.
Right. Yep. Okay. All right. And I guess it, this basically just goes back to that change in the statute where essentially they created the Library Resources Board. And I know under the revised code, they created a transitory council that was supposed to have a certain lifespan. And Medina County decided to keep two associations.
Yep.
And, and continued that. And I, I agree with you. I think that makes it more, much more confusing. Doesn't make sense to have two that are basically have that, if you're operational control and oversight of the Law Library, Law Library Resources.
And I think as a board, or at least personally for me, I'm agnostic as to the existence of the association in parallel with the Resources Board. But for our purposes, when we have two parties that claim, well, that's our lease, that's when it gets confusing. And so-
I agree.
So that, to me, I don't, I don't believe that this will have to have any impact on the association or its continued operation. That's a separate standalone nonprofit. It's been operated as such over the years. But that's from a, from a, you know, county standpoint and clarifying who the, who the tenant is, I think is important.
Who the lease was, exactly. But they've got resources. I mean, they can call themselves the Friends of the Law Library. That's just a way, like Friends of the County Home, Friends of the Parks. Fine. And then as a nonprofit can then benefit the, the Law Library.
Right.
Yeah. And I, I think that makes total sense and certainly in more in conformance with the Ohio Vice Code that was adopted in December of 2008.
Right. And that's kind of been, that's been the prosecutor's interpretation, too.
Good, good.
Any other comments or?
Okay, good. Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right.
And there is a letter that'll go out in connection with that to, to relate to the association as well.
Super. All right. Very good. Okay, I, we do have a, I have to read the memorandum into the record. This is a notice of detachment petition been filed. Please be advised that a detachment petition was filed by our office. This is from the, on Wednesday, November 27, 2024. The petition is for 18.978, 9780 acres to be detached from Brunswick Hills Township to the City of Brunswick. Information has been forwarded to the Tax Map Office to verify the accuracy and to the Auditor's Office, Prosecutor's Office and Planning Department for their review. And then the petition is attached and the ordinance passed by the City of Brunswick. And we have that for public inspection, those that are interested. But that, we just needed to read that into the record. Okay. All right. Open up any, no other Commissioners' Resolutions, public comment?
Brittany?
No.
I think, all right. Very good. All right. And discussion session.
I had actually given the update last week. So, no, yeah, we're all good on, Chris is moving forward with negotiations. So-
Super.
We will hear something soon.
Great.
We had, we had some emails received over the weekend regarding some concerns related to the operation of the dog shelter over the Thanksgiving holiday. And I'm in the process of responding to the, to the folks who emailed directly about that. But apparently there was some confusion over the schedule and the operation of that. So I think there were folks who would, who believed that the dogs at the shelter were left for the four-day weekend unattended. And that's obviously not the case. There was, there was coverage in the morning of Thursday morning, Thanksgiving morning, for I think at least four hours. Somebody was in there exercising the dogs and cleaning the, the kennels and everything like that. And then I think she also checked in again on the evening on Thursday. And I think she also fed them a, a kind of a special meal for, for the holiday. So, so those things happened on Thursday. Friday, a similar procedure was followed. And Saturday, in fact, they were open their, their normal business hours from 10 to 2. So like I said, I'm responding directly to the folks who, who emailed about that. But I just wanted to make it known that the operation of the dog shelter during those long weekends, there is coverage there, even during times when the, when the shelter itself isn't open to the public.
So apparently it was misinformation shared on social media?
Yeah, that would, that appears to be the cause.
Wow. What do you know?
Right, right.
Good.
But it, it also is, it's, it's one of those things where I think the perception becomes, well, if they're not open, there's no staff there. The reality is the staff that needs to be there for the facility to be open to the public for, you know, to meet our, our safety and security requirements are, you know, is a little bit different than what we need to have there to, to take care of the, of the animals. So.
Understood. Well, thank you.
Yep.
All right. And that's it?
Uh, yeah.
That's all you have? Okay. I don't have anything either. So I will entertain a motion for executive session.
Move to convene executive session to discuss collective bargaining matters and to consider the appointment of a public official.
Second.
Moving second. Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right. Everybody have a good week.
I think I'm ready.